Before we get started, we have a presentation or announcement to make from the Parks and Rec Department. Jody, you want to come up and tell us what's going on and what's been accomplished?
I do. A couple of years ago, we started a cross-country team in Walton County. We run up at Meridian Park through some of the land y'all purchased a couple of years ago. And we had a female that did real well this year, and so we wanted to bring her up to be recognized. She ran in the 12-and-under tournament in the GRPA, which is Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. She also ran in the North Georgia Youth Runners Association. Most of the events were around 3K. So she had a perfect score, which means she never got beat in any of the meets that we had. So I'd like to recognize Elaine Sikowski. She would come up. Charles Jackson actually was our coach this year. Charles, you come up as well.
Congratulations. If y'all would re-stand up, we're going to open the meeting by saying a pledge of allegiance to the flag and then have an invocation afterward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for this day. Please watch over each one of us tonight as we make decisions for the county and hope that we make the best ones. Please be with everyone here tonight as they leave and go home. Keep them all safe. And one thing, I guess I'd be a little selfish. Please help the brave tonight. Jesus is the friend. Amen.
Amen. You kind of caught us off-guard with that one, Ms. Sharnah. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order and let the roll call show that all six commissioners are present and move to the adoption of the agenda.
Still moved.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Dixon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous. And we'll jump right into planning and zoning recommendations, and we'll start off with 4.1. Ms. Sharnah.
All right. This rezon Z21080001 is to rezone 4.79 acres from R1 to B1 for a Dollar General store. The applicant is South SW North Monroe LLC. The owner is Jessica Byrd. The property is located at 2971 Gradus Road and Mount Vernon Road. It is in District 4. As I stated, the applicant is asking to rezone for a Dollar General. The request does comply with the land use, which is Village Center. The Planning Commission heard from opposition, and the applicant did meet with members of the neighborhood, but they were not able to come up with any agreeable conditions. The Planning Commission recommended denial.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing for this rezon application, and we will start with the applicant. Is the applicant here? Would like to come up? Please state your name and then tell us about what you're wanting to do.
My name is Brian Sullivan. I'm with Sullivan Wickley Properties. We're the SW of SW North Monroe. We're the applicant and contract purchaser for this property that is before you tonight. As was said, we are seeking your approval to rezone this to commercial in accordance with the county's land use plan. The county's land use plan designates this property as Village Center, which is where commercial should go, so we are simply following the county's land use plan. Now, we have a unique opportunity because this property is about five acres. Our proposed use would use right around two of that five acres. So we've got a lot of wiggle room. We've got a lot of flexibility in how we can lay out this site. We can increase the size of the buffers. We can move things around to mitigate any impact on any adjoining properties or the surrounding area. We can make portions of the property as permanent open space. I'm even willing to dedicate excess land to the community or the county or adjoining property owners because, like I said, we've got a lot of flexibility with how this thing can be laid out. In addition to the flexibility on how the site can be designed, we've got the same level of flexibility with how the building can look and how it can be designed so that it is more compatible with the character of the area. I can make the building wood siding with a pitched roof to make it look like a farmhouse or any other character or design angle so that it is more compatible with the character of the area. I've got a long track record of working with communities in rezonings and plat approvals, trying to find common ground, trying to find compromise. And I'm willing to do that here, but this community has been unwilling to engage in any constructive conversations. We did meet. They allowed me to come to one of their community meetings. They told me I could speak for five or 10 minutes, but there would be no questions from the community, and when I was done, I could dismiss myself. So we did meet. We have been cordial with one another. They're very good people, but we have not had any constructive conversations to try to find any sort of common ground. I'm willing, so far, they have really stuck to their guns, just not wanting the commercial rezoning. So I'm asking you tonight to rezone it for commercial in accordance with the county's land use plan, but please know I'm willing to work with the community. I'm willing to move things around. I've got a lot of flexibility. I can design this thing just about any way feasible. If there is any sort of common ground, I'm very willing to try to find it. And aside from that, I'd like to save the rest of my time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we will let opponents to this rezon come up and please state your name and where you live and...
Mr. Chairman, why don't you start with anybody who wants to speak for it?
Oh, is there anyone that wants to speak for it? You're correct. I'm sorry. New chairman, still learning the tricks of the trade. Does anyone else here want to speak for this rezon? Okay. If not, we'll start with those that want to speak against this rezon. And please try not to repeat the same issues over and over and over. We get it once we're told, you know, where you stand and...
My name is Blake Davis. I live at 3384 Shoal Creek Road, Monroe, Georgia. Tonight, we're here for a decision, a decision to be made to approve or deny the rezon of 4.79 acres from R1 to B1 for retail Dollar General location. But not only a decision of rezon will be made here tonight, a decision on the future of smart growth, future safety, future improvements, future quality of life, future property values, and the future success of a small local Walton business is being made here tonight. I'm representing the people of Gradus tonight in opposition of this rezon. If you're here tonight and you are in opposition of this, I ask you raise your hand and state aye for the record.
Aye.
This is the community here tonight that we're representing here of Gradus here, and I appreciate the opportunity. But before we start talking about the future that we're concerned about here, we're going to talk a little bit about right now with what we currently have in our county with Dollar Generals. In the last 48 months, seven Dollar Generals have been approved by your board here. So y'all know the number of stores that are in our county and in the location here. So with over a dozen stores inside of our county, we're almost to a limit to where we need to think about the numbers of these types of retail locations and the places in which they can be placed inside of our county. The largest concern we have is this would be the only store that would not be on a state route inside of our county here today, to date. That would be a large concern for the community as far as safety, increased traffic with the intersection. This intersection here is just a four-way stop, so there's a lot of concerns that we have in the future moving forward with this store. And the stores that we already have in the county, it's a large selection of over-processed, under-healthy, you know, non-healthy goods, stock of perishable items. There's trash in and out of these stores because they're not properly stocked, lack of staff, due to the condition of our economy. The detention ponds are not properly maintained, and that creates severe hazards as far as public health with mosquitoes, biting flies, rodents, and things of that nature. So those are the things that we consistently see in and around the stores that we have already in this county. And if we allow another one to come, that'll be another store that'll be under-maintained and understaffed that will not actually be doing any good for the community in which it's trying to come into. But as we move forward with the future smart growth, the definition of future smart growth, planned economic and community development that attempts to curb urban sprawl and worsening environmental conditions. As we see it, the community of Gradus, the main issue is the number of stores we already have. That's an attempt of urban sprawl here in the county of Walton. And then, as I stated, it's not a state route. It's the biggest issue here we have with this store. Number two, this big-box retail. You gentlemen here, y'all have worked hard for the local people of the community over the past 10 years and the local businesses alongside with the City of Monroe, with the Downtown Development Authority and the Chamber of Commerce. The buy-local program in the downtown Monroe has thrived, and our county has seen the benefit. So I'd like for y'all gentlemen to think as we like to push for local Walton businesses in our area. The future safety. We worked hand-in-hand with the Walton County Sheriff's Office, and over the past few years, we just out of the Dollar General locations alone, there were 781 911 calls that were responded to from those locations. That's a large number of crime in and around our county. And if we bring the Dollar General location into Gradus, that number is going to continue to rise at a higher rate due to the number of stores that we increased that we allow. With the future improvements, as far as roadways are concerned, if you allow this improvement or this rezon, this would be a roads and bridges disaster in the future. The right-of-way on this property goes all the way up into the road. The right-of-way at the Gradus store goes all the way up into the road. So as far as making any types of improvements with intersection changes or red lights or roundabout or turn lanes, approving this rezon would severely cause problems with the county and the roads and bridges side. Moving forward with the future quality of life, with the conditions of the stores that we already have, bringing in a severely understaffed store would not do anything good to the quality of life that we already hold true to in Gradus. The amount of crime, which I stated before, would rise, and we already don't have a lot of crime in Gradus to this date. We would have the delivery trucks coming in, having their backup beepers, the lift gates banging, garbage trucks coming, which we only have one garbage truck coming now, and that's to the Gradus store. So this would be one more truck that residents would get to hear banging and clanging early in the morning in this subdivision directly behind it. These stores are open until 10:00 PM, so this will be a noise problem, traffic problem, and a potential loitering problem, which goes back to the crime right here in our community. If they're open until 10:00 PM, that nonsense is going to be going on as well. The future property values, the subdivision directly behind this location would suffer tremendously because of the Dollar General coming in. You gentlemen know, people are not going to want to buy a home out in the country with a Dollar General in their backyard if they've just moved from Gwinnett County, in which there are several people here. Mr. Ed Schindler, who he's moved here about nine months ago from Gwinnett County. His property is just directly behind, in that subdivision, the Dollar General. So him and his family is there in the backyard if this is approved. He's going to have a 10,000-square-foot monument in his backyard that he'll be able to see and enjoy as he just got out of the pro-development in Gwinnett County. So the property values will be severely affected in the future. The future success, this store that we have in our community now, it's really all we need as far as convenience, because as convenience is concerned, we can drive seven to 12 minutes in any direction and be in 12 different Dollar General locations from that intersection in Gradus. So as far as the convenience needs of it, anything that we need, Alex has it. He's probably the only convenience store that you can go get your locally grown beef in a convenience store. So we can get a lot of things through Alex at the Gradus store that we don't need the Dollar General for. And as I close, we respectfully request that you follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee as they've thought, they pondered this issue, and they made a recommendation. We ask that you follow that, the application for the Dollar General due to the future smart growth, the quality of life, and the prosperity of Gradus. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else want to speak against this, or are you speaking for the whole group?
They're welcome.
You're welcome to speak. This is an open public hearing.
I'm publicly against it.
Well, if you're going to speak, you need to come up to the podium. We already gathered that from the show of hands. Okay, if there's no other speakers against it, I'll give the applicant a chance to come I'm sorry, I didn't write your name down. Is there...
It is Brian Sullivan.
Brian Sullivan.
Yes. And I get it. It's change. No one likes change. But the county's land use plan designates this for commercial. When the county was planning its growth, it designated certain areas for commercial, certain areas for residential, and whatnot. As I said at the Planning Commission meeting, I would not be before you tonight if I did not comply with the county's land use plan. So what we're proposing is a lower intensity use of what someone else years from now, if I get denied, could be back before you with something that's going to use all five acres. And what I'm proposing is take the five acres, only use about half of it, mitigate any impact on the adjoining properties, oversized buffers, undisturbed areas. Try to lay out the site and the building location so it does not impact the neighbors behind. I'm willing to dedicate things as conservation area. There's just a lot of flexibility that I have, and I can make this thing look compatible with the character of the area. I can make it look like a farmhouse. I can make it wood siding, paint it white, pitched roof. There's just a lot of things here. So I'm willing to work. I'm willing to try to find compromise, try to find some sort of common ground, and if not me, the next person may not be so willing. And, you know, maybe I'm the boogeyman tonight, but sometimes it's better to dance with the devil you know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. If we're through with comments, I will... Any other comments? All right, I'll close the public hearing and entertain discussion or motion from the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny this application.
Please, please, while we're holding the meeting, you can applaud after the vote, but please let us conduct the meeting. We don't have a second yet. All right, we have a motion to accept the Planning Commission's denial of this rezon, of this request.
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Dixon. Any further discussion, questions? All right. I'll call the vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous of the Board to sustain the denial recommended by the Planning Commission. Now y'all can give a clap.
Yeah!
All right. We have a rather long agenda, so if y'all don't mind, we'll move on to the next rezon. And quietly, if you're leaving, please quietly do so. Thank you. Ms. Sharnah, you want to wait just a second?
Is that really in the land use map? Is that in the land use map? Is that in the whole news map? Is that in the land use map?
It is.
If he's soon, he's going to...
Well, y'all are going to leave us all alone. I thought some of you watched your government at work a little bit. All right, Sharnah, let's move on with our meeting.
All right. 4-2, to accept the withdrawal of land use 21080011 and rezon Z21080004. This was a land use amendment from Highway Corridor to Neighborhood Residential and a rezon of 44 acres from A1 to R1 OSC, which was withdrawn. So we just need for the vote to accept that withdrawal.
So with it being withdrawn, do I need to open a public hearing?
You can just make a motion to...
Need to have a motion to accept the withdrawal.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Yep, couple seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one's unanimous. Okay, 4-3.
Okay, a conditional use, CU 21080030, conditional use for a telecommunications tower. The applicant is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T. Property owner is Hugh Floyd Atha Jr. Property is located at 192 Pleasant Valley Road. This is in District 4. The applicant is requesting the conditional use for a cell tower. He stated there were no cell towers in this area. He asked that the landscape buffer be waived due to the closest property line to the tower would be at least 312 feet. It's going to be in a wooded area, and they'll have a 10-foot chain-link fence with barbed wire along the top. The Planning Commission did hear from one local resident, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with condition that the fencing have slats in lieu of the landscape buffer.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? I'll open a public hearing on this application. Please come forward, sir.
So I'm Chad Cordell. I represent AT&amp;T and Mr. Atha in proposing this tower off of Pleasant Valley Road. So thank you for letting me speak here. We were provided two conditions, as was just mentioned. I came up with two from what the Planning Commission said. One was to provide the slats around the, within the chain-link fence around the compound, so it'll be opaque. The color, we usually go with green or brown. Sometimes it's white, but they didn't provide a preference, so... But so we'll take care of that. And then the second thing that I gathered from the meeting was to also provide a Phase 1 environmental study to Mr. Cohen, who's the adjacent property owner to the east of the site. There's a, he had concerns about safety and aesthetics, but mainly safety, he said. And so we can provide him that Phase 1 environmental. We'll provide it to the county, and they can distribute it to Mr. Cohen. Since the last hearing, though, we've had, as we gather our federal approvals, we've had the FAA come back with a preliminary notice that we will not comply with the safety of aeronautical flight in the area, whether it be physical obstruction due to the landing pattern and takeoff pattern around the airport, Si Nunley Memorial. Am I saying that right?
Si Nunley Memorial Airport, yes.
So we're about two miles south of that airport. But the initial findings were that they could approve it, and I quote, "If the structure were to be reduced in a height so as to not exceed 211 feet above ground level," we were proposing 250, and it's 260 with a lightning rod. And then I continue on, "It would not create a substantial adverse effect, and a favorable determination could subsequently be issued by the FAA." And I have a documentation of the FAA preliminary study that I can provide you tonight. So we took this information back to the AT&amp;T RF engineers, and they provided the following, and I'll quote again. "As a result of the recently issued FAA prelim findings, the maximum tower height permitted is 211 feet. After further review, this height will not, while not optimum, will still provide parity of service needed for the capacity and coverage within the intended geographic service area." So this will still do the job to get first net to the community, to provide good voice and data transmission to the AT&amp;T customers, and the tower will still be available for co-location for other users to benefit from.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it. So just respectfully ask for your vote of approval tonight so we can provide this service to the community.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this that would like to speak in favor of it? Okay, is there anyone here opposed to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the Board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chip or Sharnah, can y'all elaborate on the FAA findings? Because essentially, would they not supersede anything we do to that point anyway?
It would have to be that height. It couldn't be higher.
Exactly, but essentially, when it comes to that height, that's something that they would have to check the box as well to go along with that, which would be above and beyond what we would approve, correct? to go along with that, which would be above and beyond what we would approve, correct? Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, adding the... A maximum height of 211 feet per the FAA recommendation.
Okay, we got a motion to approve.
Yes, with the conditions of the Planning and Zoning, correct.
And I got a second from Commissioner Banks, I think. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next case is rezon 2108-0023. Rezon 1.401 acres from R1 to A1 to be combined with the property at 5889 Center Hill Church Road. The applicant and owners are Kevin and Shelley Shellnut. This property is located at 336 Brook Hollow. This is in District Two. And as I stated, she had previously come before the board and got this property on Center Hill approved for a kids' day camp. And this would be taking 1.401 acres from the lot behind it and adding it to her lot so that she could also use it as the camp. And it will leave a buildable lot in the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, and it shows right here on this, it just is the back end of it is going to be cut off of that.
All right. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this rezon. Is the applicant here would like to come forward and tell us what she's... Or summarize what Sharnah's already said she's going to do?
According to the state...
Say your name, please, for the record.
Sorry, Shelley Shellnut.
All right, thank you, Shelley.
According to the state, the property has to be zoned ag in order for children to go on it for a day camp. So we need to divide that property if possible, making half of it ag and half of it remaining in the subdivision as R1.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this rezon? Okay, is there anyone here in opposition to this rezon that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this rezon and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezon.
We got a motion to approve.
Second.
And we got a second by Commissioner Shellnut Banks and Shellnut. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next case is rezon Z2109-0003. Rezon 5.24 acres from A1 to A to allow dog breeding and a kennel. The applicant is Lacy Atkins. Owners are Ryan Nolan and Lacy Atkins. Property is located at 405 Willow Springs Road... Willow Springs Lane. This is in District Four. The applicant would like to rezon the property to allow dog breeding and a future kennel. The kennel will be fully enclosed, and she'll only have three to four dogs that... In the kennel at any time, any one time. There was no one that was opposed. There was one resident that had concerns, but all those were addressed. The Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions, approval as stated in the application for this use only. All kennels to be located inside closed barn and limited to eight kennels within the barn. On the inside of the barn.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing on this rezon. And is the applicant here would like to come forward, please, and tell us what you got planned?
Hi, I'm Lacy Atkins, and I am looking to get my USDA pet dealer's license. And this is actually the first step in the process, to be able to go to USDA. And being an animal lover, I get lots of requests to babysit others' dogs frequently. With us one a barn already, we decided to make the barn that we are planning to build into some kennels to have, like she said, you know, three or four other dogs at a time. My dogs live inside my home, but this is like for others. There will be an indoor area, as well as each will have covered outside runs. The structure will look like a horse barn and will actually be constructed like a horse barn for resale value. So like, we'll have it stall size with a partition in the middle to make the kennels. That way, for resale, you can move the partition. It's actually a horse barn for somebody that... For resale. So I'm asking for your approval to rezon to agriculture to move forward in getting my USDA dog breeder's license. And thank you for consideration.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. We have a second by Commissioner Warren. I've got one question. The licensing for this operation, does the county get involved in the licensing? Or is that the Department of Agriculture? Both?
And I had to be agricultural to move forward.
To get the county?
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure, because, you know, these backyard breeding operations...
Yeah, no.
We have a problem with. Okay. My question's been answered. I'll call the vote on this motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next case is rezon Z2109-0005. Rezon 1.70 acres from A1 to A2 to create a buildable lot. The applicant and property owner is Chelsea Hilton. The property is located on Cowan Road. This is in District One. And these lots were previously split, but when they were split, they had written on there, you know, that they were not a buildable lot at this time. They had to... Knew they had to rezon it in order for them to be buildable. So that's what they're seeking, is to take this 1.70 acres and make it a buildable lot.
Okay, thank you. I'll open a public hearing on this application and recommendation. Is the applicant here would like to come forward real quick and tell us what's going on? Start off by stating your name and where you live, please.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Hilton. I currently live next door right now. I'm staying with my mom as we figure out all of this on Cowan Road. Yeah, my grandmother died and separated all of her property out to all of the siblings, and I got picked. So I want to build next to my mom.
Okay, so your grandmother died and split these lots up?
Yeah, took... Yeah, so like, there's five siblings, and all of them got...
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this? Is anyone here would like to speak against this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that the board approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Warren to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous.
Okay, the next is rezon Z2109-0010. Rezon 1.79 acres from R1 to B1 for a personal care home, residential care facility. The applicant and owner is Verica Vernika. The property is located at 5500 Howie 20 and Porter Road, and this is in District Two. And as I stated, she wants to rezon this property to be one for a personal care home. There'll be five residents initially, and they hope to do in addition in the future to add more. There was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
All right, thank you, Sharnah. I'll open the public hearing on this, and is the applicant here, please come forward and tell the board what your plans are and what you want to do.
Hello, my name is Jacob Vernika. I'm the son of Verica Vernika. She's trying to open up a dog care home, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
All right. Any questions? All right, and this is a resident that'll be made into a personal care home? The residence is already there? Okay, all right. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Sharnah, there's no need to put anything on this, because state mandates all of this personal home anyway. I make a motion, we accept the recommendation for planning and zoning approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banks to accept as the Planning Commission recommended.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Shellnut. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go on to the administrative consent agenda. There's several items in here. Does anyone have any questions on any particular item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the administrative consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, we have some resolutions and budget amendments, so we'll start off with the FY22 budget amendments, Milton.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The very first one, the fire code specialist is typically in the fire department. In Walton County, it's now in the planning and zoning. Both directors would... Or the chief and Sharna Parker, the director, would like to move it to fire. That's what this proposed amendment would do. It moves the money associated with that position from planning and zoning to the fire department. And again, it's the fire...
That'd be moving the salary from planning and zoning to the fire department, basically what it is. Okay, entertain a...
Any questions? Okay, the second budget amendment is a result of the Condory Wage and Market Study Plan A Modified. The total came up to 2.7 rounded, and it would decrease the fund balance by that amount.
Does that take into account the benefits that we discussed?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, so this... All right, is there another one, or is...
There's one more.
All right.
Okay, the third one is an amendment to renovate courtroom two due to COVID concerns. Would you like to give more details?
Yeah, it'd be a renovation of courtroom number two at the courthouse. It's about 5,000 square feet of total renovation. It would more than double the seating capacity of the courtroom. They're going to add a holding cell so they can conduct criminal trials there also. It would allow them to continue to hold court with...
And this is at the request of a senior judge and another Superior Court judge. They've been having to deal with the COVID and the tight conditions. And this, we hope, we can get reimbursed down the road from the federal government's COVID guidelines. But we're guessing right now how much it's going to cost, correct?
Yeah, it's a stab in the dark. It's a remodel, so...
Okay.
I think this is a high number, but I'd rather come back to y'all and say...
And reduce it than we had.
Came in under.
Okay, thank you. All right, entertain a motion that we do these three budget amendments.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Shellnut.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Banks. Any further questions? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Okay, we got a project-linked budget on the pickleball courts. I think we're doing those ourselves instead of a...
Yes, that's correct. Asking to move some lost money from general government buildings over to Park and Rec to do... Build four pickleball courts at Ayers Park in between.
In between.
Yeah. These got bid out, and they came in around $215,000. I think we can do the project for around 80, but we'll be acting as our own general contractor.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? All right, entertain a motion to approve this project-linked budget.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm going to take Beau on it. And a second from Lee Bradford. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, we have a resolution, and we'll let the county attorney tell us what's going on about the fire stations and...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is kind of a housekeeping matter. The Walton Industrial Building Authority had been utilized back in 2005 to refinance some debt that the county had related to several fire stations. And as part of that process, the properties were deeded to the Walton Industrial Building Authority. So we're just wanting to provide notice that we'd like them to transfer those properties back, because all that debt's long been repaid. So we're just cleaning it up to get those properties back in the name of the county.
Okay, any questions? Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
We got by Commissioner Bradford.
I second.
Have a second by Commissioner Dixon. Any other questions? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, the next resolution.
The next resolution relates to the financing for the jail project. You would be consenting to the bond resolution that the Walton Industrial Building Authority, the same group we just talked about that had provided financing source before for the fire stations. Now, we're looking at doing bond resolution through them for the jail project. So you'd be approving... Consent to their bond resolution they recently did, along with approving the IGA between the county and the Walton Industrial Building Authority in connection with the issuance of those bonds.
Okay.
Again, and this matter will come back to you one more time for final pricing and approval, but this is the next step in that.
This is the next step to get the pricing on the bond.
That's exactly right.
Okay, any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, I think, as Commissioner Adams.
Yes, sir. Second.
Yeah, a second from Commissioner Banks. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right, we have two oppose. Commissioner Bradford and Commissioner Dixon. Passes, four to two. All right, resolution on the Walton County Water and Sewer Authority.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is consenting to a bond resolution of the Walton County Water and Sewage Authority in connection with refunding bonds, Series 2021, in connection with the reservoir project, and also approving an associated IGA between Walton County and the Walton County Water and Sewage Authority in connection with those bonds. This is a savings opportunity. It's a refinance. They're projecting close to $2 million in savings.
On the two, 65 and 66, correct?
Well, we've got two different ones.
Right.
2020... Yeah, 65 is the 2021... 2020, yeah, 65 is the 2021 series. That we're advanced, recommending advanced approval of a 2026 series because at that point, you'll be able to take advantage of doing non-taxable bonds there. This first series is, relates to taxable. The bond attorney and the underwriter here, if y'all have any specific questions on that. But this is all designed to take advantage of the...
Low interest rates.
...that you have right now, and you can save some significant money there.
All right.
So, this is just 65 on the Series 2021.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? All right, entertain a motion on 65 first.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. And I didn't catch the second.
I think it was Banks.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous, and then...
66 is along the same lines here again, consenting to a bond resolution of the Walton County Water and Sewerage Authority in connection with the Series 2026 bonds, and also approving an associated IGA between the Water Authority and Walton County in connection with those bonds. Again, it's all designed as part of this refinancing effort.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion from Bradford.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Warren. All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
I changed it on you, didn't I? Caught you with that. Opposed? All right, I was just seeing if you were on your toes. Passes unanimous. Okay, 67 is a resolution, and...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that relates to kind of a housekeeping matter related to Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs North. The JDA, the Joint Development Authority, is asking that the service delivery strategy be amended so that essentially the services provided in that, in that Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs North area be essentially assigned by the JDA. Part of that area is already, some of the services have already been assigned through that process, but this is just a, an amendment to the service delivery strategy for that purpose. The City of Monroe also asked, as part of that, that they had passed a City of Monroe resolution that essentially restricted sewer, the provision of sewer services outside the city to new customers. So, there's some language in the resolution related to that, that was being done at the City of Monroe's request. But the main intent of the resolution was to give the JDA some authority down in Stanton Springs to decide who would provide service, the various services down there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
We have a second. And I didn't catch who made either one. All right, thank you. All right. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you. All right, human resources.
Good afternoon. The board approval last month changed the current pay tables, which will be effective November 8. And this, this change would just pretty much clean up and change the tables back to match the current process.
Yeah, we changed the steps.
Yes, sir.
And we have to make it match like before, so...
Right.
Entertain a motion to amend the civil service personnel rules and regulations.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dixon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shellnut. Any further questions? Call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, up next is contracts. And we need to properly approve Ascension Program Management. They're going to get involved when and if we proceed forward with the Walnut Grove Facility Parks and Recreation Facility. And it'll be subject to, the approval will be subject to county attorney critiquing the contract. And we need to take these one at a time. This is another management company that's going to help us with our projects as we move forward. Some of these projects are multi-million dollar projects, and Hank's got his hands full as it is, so it's going to give him assistance. And it also helps pre-qualify contractors and make sure we have qualified contractors. Yes, we generally take the low bid, but we don't have to take, look at everybody's low bid. We qualify that they're capable of doing the work that we're setting out to do to begin with. So, entertain a motion to approve the Walnut Grove Park contract with Ascension Program Management.
I make a motion to approve.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shellnut.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Bradford. Okay, all those in favor, and it's subject to the county attorney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. 82 is the same thing. This is the courtroom renovation. Hank just got up and we changed the budget on. Ascension gave us a real good bid on it also, and that's one of the profiles that they have done countless times, is renovations of government buildings. And entertain a motion under the same conditions that, after the county attorney approves, that we move forward with it.
So moved. Motion to the board approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Warren.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Dixon. All right, and any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. And now, 83 is amended IGA.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an IGA involving the Joint Development Authority. This is for revenue sharing. There's an agreement that you've had in place for years on how the money that's generated out at Stanton Springs is split up. This IGA is being amended mainly to add, other than some cleanup, it's mainly intended to add Stanton Springs North. The JDA has bought significant additional land since the original IGA was done. And there's some, sharing of some of the, Social Circle has a piece of Stanton Springs North in addition to the four original partners there. So, this is cleanup, the revenue sharing agreement to account for Stanton Springs North.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve this amended IGA.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bradford. I'll second it. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, we, any discussion? Anybody wants to bring up anything to chat about? Any announcements? There's no executive session planned, so I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that's all on administrative consent agenda. We didn't ask any questions. But yeah, we, I was sure, we got rid of the way, we didn't want to be in it.